I don't know if the videos that were posted this evening, and the first ones like three minutes long.
I had problems uploading it properly. She's very kind here, so she can't sort of...
Mandy, did you get that?
Somebody's still worried.
Yeah. Okay, I'll help you there.
I got a big screwdriver and a hammer.
I can't hear that talk to him.
You gotta get it here.
No, I'm just saying that.
Punch out here when you start. Kind of powerful guy. Somebody lied to you.
Roll call tonight's meeting of the Beloit City Council with order. Mandy, would you take a roll call?
Tony Dingler?
Yes.
Kent Miller?
Yes.
Robert Peterson?
Yes.
Matt Audie?
Yes.
Rick Brown? Lloyd Luttrell?
Present.
Thank you. I'll bring your attention, we have a revised agenda this evening, and we have ordinances, especially the increment. That's the change there. And then also, we had a person apply for the opening on, in the first ward, and then we'll seat that person, we'll bring him up and have the vote on that after the new council takes his seat. So, if you'll stand with me now for the invitation.
Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the abundant moisture that we received over the weekend, and the moisture that is yet to come, to help us raise our crops, to help our community flourish. Pleased to be with the families of our community, and our community for the loss of a young man this weekend. It's always tough, but we know he is in your hands. We want you to be with our outgoing councilmen, and be with them as they proceed, and be with our new ones as they are seated, to help them make the decisions of our community. As always, we want you to be with our law enforcement, as they have a very tough job at keeping us safe, and also our people, men and women in the armed services that are serving here and abroad. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Peterson, do you have anything at this time?
Uh, no, the only thing I got to say is, VFW had a real successful breakfast Sunday, we served over 500 people.
Man, that's a lot.
And that'll be our last breakfast until September. And I'd like to take this opportunity to say, thank you, Andrew, for running. Even though he beat me, I appreciate you taking the time to be on our council and represent us in the state of Ward. And if there's anything I can do to help you out, I just live a few blocks from you, I'll be glad to help you any way I can.
Thanks very much.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Bob. Tony?
Just happy for the reins.
Yeah, yeah, extremely happy for me. So you know. Matt?
A couple things. One, heart goes out to the Smith family and their loss. And another thing is, I was approached by members of the Summer Kids Cafe organization, and, you know, they're doing some financial recruiting this year to get somebody to keep the program going. And I know in years past, we've helped them out with pool passes. I'm not entirely certain to the extent the city's helping out with the Summer Kids Cafe, but I wanted to bring this and pass it around so that all the councilors can see, learn about the program, maybe consider giving them a line up. For instance, if we want to be, like sponsor a day, it's like a $200 donation for a day, or if you want to sponsor a whole week, it's a $1,000 thing for the whole week, a financial donation of that. Or, like I said, we could do something like pool passes.
Sure.
So, you know.
I think in the past, maybe the office took care of that.
We do. Yeah, we'd take care of that.
He presented his approval, he could...
What is the extent that the city helps?
It was about 100, it was, it used to be like 150 a day. So we did it a day, I think, so.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Floyd, do you have anything at this time?
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you. No city attorney report this evening, I think she's busy this evening. Jade, do you have anything at this time?
Uh, I may have some things to bring up when we get to work session agenda.
Okay, that'll be fine. Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda for the April 5th council meeting, appropriations for being kind of a fire department officer. It's been moved by Council Peterson that we accept the consent agenda in its entirety. Do we have a second? Seconded by Council Luttrell, is there any discussion? No discussion. Mandy, would you take a roll call vote on that, please?
Dingler?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Audie?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the appreciation for our exiting council members, and... Bob, on behalf of the governing body in the city of Beloit, I want to thank you for your service for the last four years and the service of your lifetime for this community. We want to thank you, it's appreciated.
Appreciate it, thank you. It's a great honor, really.
It is, it is. You get a lot out of it.
Beautiful place to live, and even though we're all going to agree all sometimes, we work together and make it work.
Same common cause, thank you. Okay, at this time, the new councilmen will come forward, and we will have the loyalty for the new and re-elected council members.
In front of the K-3 stands in front.
Thank you.
All right, guys want to do it all at once, or one at a time?
Do it all at once. Floyd, she just likes to speak.
It's all right.
Do it once.
Do it once, all right. Okay, I, and then repeat your name, and then... Okay, I?
Tom Moss.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas?
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of councilor, so help me God.
And faithfully discharge the duties of councilor, so help me God.
Okay, welcome aboard, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Lloyd?
This is not on your agenda items this evening, but we have had one person express interest for the open seat in the first ward, and that is Raymond Ponto. Raymond, would you please come forward and address the council? Raymond has filed all the paperwork that he needed to for the position, it's been at the city office for a while, and some of the council requests that we go ahead and seat the position tonight, so we have more input on our council. Anyone have questions for Raymond?
How long ago?
You tried again? How long ago was it you served?
Eight years, ooh, eight years, thank you.
He's a puppet.
You didn't know I was a ventriloquist, did you? Among all my talents, yes.
Yeah, we didn't see the rest of the show. Why do you want to run for city council, or why do you want to serve on city council?
Well, my wife and I and our family have lived here for 25 years, and Beloit is a wonderful place to live, and I would like to do what I can to help the city continue to grow, and to be a part of this organization.
Any other question?
I would move that we seat Mr. Ponto on the city council.
It's been moved by Councilman Audie that we seat Mr. Ponto on the city council, an open spot in the first ward, seconded by Councilman Miller. Any further discussion? No further discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Welcome aboard, Raymond.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I think you will need to be sworn in. Okay. You should be sworn in. That's happened too.
All right, well, I think you heard them before. I?
I, Raymond Ponto.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas?
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of councilor?
And faithfully discharge the duties of councilor?
So help me God.
So help me God. Jenny, how are you doing?
Good, good to meet you too, sir.
Okay. Next item on the agenda this evening is to appoint the council president, since we've seated a new council every year.
If Lloyd wants it, I would nominate him.
I have a motion on the floor to nominate Lloyd as council president. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilman Audie. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor of Lloyd, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Lloyd is now the council president. Okay, next item on our agenda, this is the revised key soda, is the Resolution 2016, excuse the ordinance, 2181, special event permit for a kettle, and for June 3rd, 2016. Have any questions or comments, or questions for staff on that? If no questions, I entertain a motion to accept or approve.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Dingler that we approve the ordinance 2181, the special event permit for the kettle, and it was seconded by Councilman Luttrell. Is there any further discussion?
I think we should tell the community what's going to happen at this point.
Go ahead, Matt, you're on it.
The owners of the kettle are planning an anniversary celebration event, Jazz Under the Stars, on Friday, June 3rd, that will be serving alcohol, and have applied for a special event license at the State of Kansas. State of Kansas requested city formally. So, yeah, they're going to have a pretty sweet block party, I guess, event called Jazz Under the Stars.
I think that would be nice, I think they're a little thankful for having it well attended.
Yes.
That's nice to have at the community. Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion for ordinance passes. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2016, ratification of the mayor's appointment and officer, and I've customary the city attorney, Katie Schroeder, Miss Superior Judge Bonnie Wilson, official city newspaper, Boyd Call, city engineer, Stuart Porter, cemetery endowment board, Jim Bell, Aaron Lampert, and Phil Roberts, planning commission, Jesse Benedict, tree board, Cheryl Renter, housing authority, which is Sunny Slope, Mary Maxwell, and Lila Newell. Entertain a motion to approve. Go ahead.
I would move to approve Resolution 2016-10, ratification of mayor appointments.
It's been moved by Councilman Luttrell, we approve Resolutions 2016-10.
Second.
City officers appointment, seconded by Councilman Graybon. Is there any further discussion?
Are there any changes?
Yeah, Cheryl Renter, Jesse Benedict's coming on to the planning commission, because we've got some, Andrew had to resign from that, and then I think Mary and Lila were already on the Sunny Slope. Those, I think, are the only changes.
Is it all currently on the planning commission at the moment?
It was Cheryl and Kathy Roberts, because Mick Richmond also put in his resignation because he wasn't making it down. So they were down to two, which left them short of form.
So Jesse stepped up.
We're now three out of five then?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you'd still need one from the zone outside, and one from inside.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the secondary bushings for tie transformers from Solomon Corporation for $29,640. Is there some question for staff on this? This is, go ahead, Tony.
Were these bushings removed in order to drain and refill the transformers, or?
What I understood, they put a tiny big vacuum on it. First of all, the seals started leaking, and we went in and fixed them, but then in the process of this, when they were pulling the air back out of it, these insulators cracked, and they was leaking. They're epoxy right now, and they're holding, but they only guarantee them for about a year. And there's only one place that makes those bushings, so that's kind of where we're at.
Any other questions for staff? Entertain a motion to approve, it's been moved by Councilman Graybon that we approve the bid for $29,640 for Solomon Corporation. Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll say it.
Seconded by Councilman McMillan. Is there any other further discussion? No further discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is the Nordic and Box Pad bid from, and the amount of $10,099. And, from Chris Davis, here we go, I'm sorry. Any questions for staff on that?
The only question I had is, there's no issue waiting the additional couple of weeks to go with Chris rather than standing, as far as the time?
No, we have one that we're getting quoted on right now, and it's going to be kind of an issue. We had one get hit up here at North Campus, and it's a little bit bigger, Marty, and we're waiting on prices right now, and if it's under the $5,000, I'm going to go to Jay and say if he can okay, and I will write it into it.
Okay, entertain a motion to accept. Do I have a second? It's been a motion accepted by Councilman Ponto, and seconded by Councilman Audie to approve the Nordic and Box Pad bid. Any other?
I have a question.
Sure.
Ronnie, the ones that are on this bid tonight are just to have on hand, right?
Yeah, and we didn't bid the bigger one, because at the time, it wasn't it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further questions, those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the fire protection service request from Robert and Jennifer Thompson at the NCK Dance Studio at 602 Actionville Road. Is there any comments for staff on that, recommended by Chief Milton, we approve this.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the recommendation, Chief Milton, provided with fire protection.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilman Audie that we approve the fire protection request for Robert and Jennifer Thompson, seconded by Councilman Graybon. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Okay, next item on our agenda this evening is adjournment. Do I have a...
We can adjourn, we can adjourn.
Can't adjourn without...
How do we do this? Somebody's going to step up. Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Luttrell that we adjourn. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilman Ponto. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor that we adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Okay, we stand adjourned. In the workstation, Administrator Newton wants to discuss the council with a couple issues.
Yeah, I just wanted to inform you of some things that have happened in the last week or so. Last Friday, Click and people from SWO meeting, and I attended the pre-construction meeting up at Belleville, at the Kansas Department of Transportation offices for the K-14 project out here. Project's going to begin May 16th, and it's going to run until the November 16th, so it, they will be closing the street and redirecting traffic, and I think Click is right on top of what's going to happen to, as far as diverting traffic, and I thought you might want to know, the project's on its way.
My question is, what's this going to do to the Main Street project? Is that going to move it back to next summer, or are we going to still try and do both?
Click and I had some conversation about that just today.
Yeah, Stuart and myself, and we're going to get together with Jay, is still talking about when that one's about ready to wrap up, send this out for bid, East Main out for bid. Even the lateness of the year, we're thinking that maybe we would get some, you know, basically maybe this guy out here may bid it, and we're hoping to get started weather permitting, and if not, schedule it for as early in the spring as possible, so we can at least do a Phase 1, and do from the highway in as far as possible, to get the project going, and maybe keep logistically these people around, if they so bid.
Okay, that's my question, we're not going to close two major access points at the same time.
Where are they going to reroute that traffic to Jay, or Walin?
It's going to come around and come in 8th Street. It's going to go around on 24, come in 8th, and then that's pretty much it.
Oh, out west, or out east?
Yeah. They'll divert 14 traffic on around and into 8th from on south.
Will this bridge project be done?
This project is, should be done within a month, is what we were told at KDOT.
Anything else, Jay?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to kind of give you an update on the city administrator recruitment process. Marla Flingy from Austin Peters is going to be here on the 4th of May to meet with the department heads, and she will be preparing a recruitment brochure that she wants to meet with the department heads to talk about the position. And following that, she wants to meet with each of you, as members of the city council, to talk about your expectations, what you're looking for, and she would be here during the week of May 9th, and sometime during that week, if there's a chance to schedule a time to meet with each of you, she would like to be able to do that. And I, just as a personal opinion, I think that's very important, because I think you need to have your input, and you need to tell her what you expect, what you want with an administrator, and so, is it possible on Wednesday, May 11th, that would be in the middle of the week, that you could be available for maybe up to an hour? And we'd have to schedule individual meetings with you and Andrew.
For me? Yeah, make myself available. If there's any evening slots, I'd like to have that. That works better for someone. The 4th? The 4th?
Yeah, that would be, no, the 11th.
The 11th?
Yes, sir.
Will they get with us to set up the time, then?
Yeah, we'll be, I'll get, be getting in touch with you all to set up a time for you. Okay, what else you got? Yeah, a couple other little items. And then Austin Peters, the folks that are, that are going to be doing the job descriptions, they're coming in on the 3rd, 4th, and 5th, and they're going to be, they're scheduled to meet with each city department employees to talk about job descriptions and review those, and so they'll be here working three days to go through that process, and I don't know, but they may, or they may not want to ask questions to you, if they do, I'll let you know, and we'll see what they want. So then all that process is rolling along, it's happening. And then I have, I guess it's my way of meeting people, I've had a couple calls from a gentleman named Ray Thompson that owns TNR Trucking, and you may know him, but he is wanting to acquire a piece of property that belongs to the city behind his place of business. Apparently he's going a little planning ahead in terms of being able to pass that business along to other family members in the future, so I've been trying to figure out what he wanted, so I had Chris print us off a picture of it, and... I'm sure you, sure all of you know the location of the business, but in the picture, it's down here in the, down here in this right corner, the county weed department is over here to the right of where their business is located. Their property line runs almost immediately back of the building, as you can see, there are trucks and roadway on what is city property, just, so it's an old landfill site, I've been told, and it wouldn't be buildable. And it wouldn't be buildable, probably with some kind of a lot of alteration.
Wasn't there, wasn't there talk of making that the impound block for the police department?
Yes, that's just, that's on past and is it north of it?
The north end of the property?
Yeah, it's the north end of the property. There is a large draw that runs on the back of that line. So the city would have no, it has no value from what I can see, going out there and looking at it a couple of times in terms of city use, because it's not even accessible from, would be crossing somebody else's property to get to it. So, long story short, he would like to, he would like to acquire that from the city.